I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Matthews to order, February 11th, 2019. Let's start out with a safety minute. If we need to evacuate the building, we have stairwells to the right as you go out the door. Many of you may have come up those. Or you can go to the left down the back hallway and those stairwell, that stairwell will take you to the parking area in the back. The defibrillator is to the right of the counter outside. It is working and hopefully we won't need that, but it's got instruction, self-instructions with it. If you've got anything, bags or anything, please shove those either under your chair or under the chair in front of you, so if we do have to leave, nobody's tripping on those. I'd like to start this evening with introductions. To my far left is Becky Hawke, Assistant Town Manager. Next to Becky is Commissioner Jeff Miller. Next to Jeff is Mayor Pro Tem, John Higdon. Next to John is Commissioner Chris Melton. And to my left is our Town Manager, Hazen Blodgett. To the far right is Maureen Keith, who is our Information Director. Next to Maureen is Jay Camp, our Acting Planning Director. At the far end of the dais is Lori Canapino, our Town Clerk. Next to Lori is Barbara DeMent, Commissioner Barbara DeMent. Next to Barbara is Commissioner John Urban. Next to John is Commissioner Chris Query. And to my right is our Legal Counsel, Mr. Charlie Buckley. And I am Paul Bailey, the Mayor of the Town of Matthews. Next item is the invocation. Ms. DeMent?
If you would like, please join me in prayer. Holy and gracious God, you have been control of this world for longer than we can even fathom. You created this world and all that's in it, and you created us so that we may help make your vision for love, peace, and justice a reality. And some days we do this well, but other days we fall short. And every day we need your guidance, and we pray that today we will have your guidance. We also confess that we can be slow to turn to you for that help. We get caught up in the challenges of daily living and we become convinced that we have the capability to handle things on our own. And then we overextend ourselves and overindulge and we overreach. We drift from being the people you created us to be. I pray that you bring us back and help us to know your limits for us and to know who you intend us to be and what you intend us to do for our town. By your spirit, help us to be fully human, not more and not less. As we pray for ourselves, we also pray for others. We think of those who sit in these positions of power in our town and those who have a lot of control, and we pray that we will all serve with wisdom and with justice. We pray for those who feel powerless over their health, their circumstances, and their lives, and we ask that you make yourself known to them. May all that are hurting and grieving fill your presence this day, and may they know your steadfast love. May we all trust that your spirit is at work in our lives, bringing about wholeness and peace in ways that we cannot even imagine. Thank you, Lord, for being our God and for claiming us as your people and for giving us our identity and for entrusting your ministry to us. As we make decisions for this town tonight and its people, may your will be done in us and by us for now and forevermore. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have items to be added to the agenda. Mr. Manager, do we have any?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor, no items to add to the agenda.
Okay. Next item is public comment. We have two individuals signed up. First is Chuck Wilson.
Thank you so much, Mayor, Commissioners. My honor to be before you again tonight. Thank you for the time to do so. I live at 4704 Biltmore Forest Drive, right here in Matthews, and honored to do so. Before you on your desk is a little flyer that looks like this. I'd love for all of you to pick up a copy of that because I want to extend a special invitation to each of you tonight to attend our seventh, yeah, that's true, Seventh Community Forum on Racial Bridge Building. And if you note there that we have two of your esteemed group that are going to be with us. We have our Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. John Higdon, and Christopher Melton that will be sharing in that time. You'll notice some of the other names that are part of that. Corey King, who is part of Parks and Recreation here for the Town of Matthews. We're very excited about this. Lots of things that relate to racial bridge building, but one of the key particular things that we think is we've kind of given each of these a little bit of a nuance in the past has been this whole emphasis around affordable housing here within the Town of Matthews. I want to invite you, hope that you can come. Note here our new partnership with the Brace Family YMCA. We're thrilled about that. It's going to be at the Brace Family Y, 7:00 PM next Tuesday evening, February the 19th. Hope you all can come. Thanks.
Thank you, Chuck. Our next speaker is Mr. Harold Hood.
Good evening, Town Councilman, Mayor of the, I'm Harold Hood of 2339 Rice Road. And I have spoken to you folks a few times before now. Maybe this will be the last night, I don't know, sir, but nonetheless, I'd like to just go on record as saying thank you for all that has been involved with us on Rice Road in this business matter. The folks I've been working with from Kinger have been very fair, I think, to work with, and we have tried to reach a decision that is favorable to all for Matthews as well as neighbors in the area and as well as for Kinger. I had told the gentlemen what I was going to mention in all honesty and fairness. The one thing that I've had a concern with from the start has been the number of homes that were proposed for that community. And there's still a question about whether or not that's too many for Rice Road as well as Samuel, that sort of thing. But to stand in the way of progress whenever we might get something worse, I don't know that that's wise on anybody's part. The design that the gentleman proposed, from the last time I saw it, looks nice for the community, and I just hope that we have some good neighbors move in so that it'll make Matthews more proud. Again, thank you for all that you folks have done. I just ask that the council, with the folks that they have on staff as well, that what Kinger has proposed, they will do, and that the neighbors around there, I think, will support them in doing what we say we're going to do. So however your vote goes, just vote your conscience and we'll see what happens. And again, thanks for all your support both ways on this, gentlemen. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Hood. And that's the only folks we have signed up. Next item is the planning and zoning business, and I'd like to call on Jay Camp to introduce our Planning and Zoning Board members.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Located on the first row, and I promise I'll get everyone's names right. Larry Whitley, Natasha Edwards on the second row, Mike Foster, Scott Query, Mike Rowan, Mike Hamm, who is rotating off. He's generously serving on past his expiration date on planning boards, but we hope to have someone new in your seat, but we're glad you still joined us. And then finally Chair David Weiser. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Camp. So next we'll receive the report from the Planning and Zoning Board. Mr. Weiser?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. We have three items from our Planning Board meeting on January 22nd. First was a request for reapplication for proposed discount tire at 1625 Windsor Square Drive. Our board voted unanimously to recommend the Town Board waive the one-year waiting period to allow discount tire to submit an application for a change of condition. Our next item was administrative amendment, 2035 Moore Road, Liberty Healthcare Royal Park, CCRC, revisions to Phase Two Independent Living Units. Our board approved the request and we determined it was consistent with the Matthews Land Use Plan, and it supported the economic viability of Royal Park development. It was reasonable because it met the definition of CCRC and was in the public interest because it provided additional services for Royal Park customers. And then our last item was we had elections for 2019, and the board unanimously voted, myself, David Weiser, as the Chair and Carrie Lamson as Vice Chair for the year 2019.
Thank you, David. Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Next item is planning and zoning related actions. The first item, C1, is zoning application 2018-689 Rice Road. And again, this is to change the zoning from R15 to RVS on that certain property at 2401 Rice Road. Mr. Camp?
Mr. Mayor, Board Commissioners, I can give you a brief update from a staff perspective. As you all are aware, there've been a flurry of last-minute changes and emails regarding this site. From a Planning Department perspective, the proposal meets all of the requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance, so the development can be approved. The only remaining concern we have is that the traffic calming measure, specifically Public Works, has said that the three-way stop is not an appropriate traffic calming measure. And I know numerous discussions have been held regarding what traffic calming could occur in the future, but I did want to pass that along on behalf of Public Works. Regarding a lot of the discussion about fencing and screening materials, there've been a lot of proposals that have come in as recently as a few hours ago. I'm not up to speed on all of aspects of that, so I would ask if your board, if you're prerogative to move forward this evening, just make sure everything's very clear in the zoning motion, so there's no confusion going forward with some of those last-minute items. So, thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Query?
What was the, excuse me, what was the reasoning and decision from Public Works on the raised platform at the intersection?
I'm not sure about the raised platform. I think that the concern with the stop signs generally is that people have a bad habit of disregarding stop signs in low-speed residential settings, so it's blowing through a stop sign. I'm not so sure about the speed table question, though.
Okay. I had mentioned a couple of times that I wanted a raised platform in front of the lots 7, 8, and 9, which is the first time they come from a long stretch of road. And for me to support that, that would have to be a part of it.
Excuse me, let me pull the site plan up. So, at the intersection right here, 7, 8, 9?
Yes. On their flat is the, they've got the squiggly around that whole area, but that's because that's, the only way I could approve that would be have a traffic calming. I think that's the only way to do it is to put a raised platform, because that's where children would be going across to that park.
Right. I think-
You don't think there'd be a problem with that, then?
Based on the conversations I've had with our Town Engineer, either a mini-traffic circle here or some narrowing here would be a good way to slow the traffic as it's coming from one neighborhood to another. The concern was that this would not be adequate as cars would already be, could potentially be speeding down through this curvature in the road. Again, I'm passing those comments along from Public Works. We did not discuss the speed table when I spoke to them earlier today.
Is there anything in our ordinance that prohibits that?
There is not. This would be town right-of-way, so we could implement any sort of traffic calming that we approve.
Commissioner Query, are you talking about a speed hump or a speed table?
A hump, not a hump, a platform.
A table?
Right there, a table right there in that area. But I think that's the first long stretch you've got when you get to those, that park area, and I don't think, I don't think stop signs is going, would work. I think a platform there would require them to slow down.
Mr. Camp, I believe the petitioner has agreed to build whatever the town desires for speed calming. Is that correct? Okay.
I see a nod, yes.
Okay. So we have the opportunity to answer that question. They've made the commitment to build what we asked for.
My problem is just whether our Public Works is going to deny it, and that's, yeah, I want to make it a part of my-
They don't have any authority to do that if you approve it as a condition. Whatever you come up with.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Melton?
Thank you, Mayor. Jay, do you, I agree with the statement you made a few minutes ago, with things coming in last minute. Do we have a clear, concise, updated list of everything that's been approved, agreed upon? Because I'm looking up and down the dice, and I, for one, if I were to make the motion while I support the project from a 30,000-foot level, I don't know that I could succinctly make a motion to include everything that's been agreed upon and proposed.
I believe the applicant does have, do you have a presentation that's got these updates or no?
The change since, so I mean, I've got a list that we could do.
That being said, I'll make a motion, we defer any decision on this item until March 11th, our next planning and zoning meeting.
I'll second.
Motion's been made, seconded to defer the decision on this until March 11th. Is there any discussion on that? Mr. Query?
I think that's the first motion he's made on this, and each time we allow a Commissioner one time to defer, so I'll support it.
Okay. Mr. Urban?
I don't want, I started 8:30 this morning dealing with this, so I don't want to leave tonight without some decisions being made or something to go towards the March 11th aspect of it. So if we can kind of get the petitioner up here, Mr. Hood is graciously here tonight. He was supposed to have another errand he was going to achieve, so if we could kind of knock some of these things out of the box, then that might go to the heart of the matter. Now, go ahead, John.
No, I cut you off.
One of the, one of the things that has come up, and I know Ralph Ramsoor, Commissioner, Mayor Pro Tem had asked a question about the species of the plant, and I had already asked that Ralph would get with Mr. Hood, and Ralph was out there today, and Ralph followed up with a, an email, and his comment was that although Green Giant is one option, the arborvitae requires substantive amount of sunlight. And so his suggestions, and I think that whatever happens, our Town Arbors needs to be involved in that discussion. And I told the petitioner, we talked today as well, that just because a Commissioner says something on-site and we're talking, I still rely heavily upon staff to work out the details, and I rely heavily on landscaping aspects with Ralph Ramsoor. So I think we're all in agreeance in working with Mr. Hood that a buffer was essential, a fence was essential, how that composition is made up needed to be worked out. But to enter Ralph's record here, he talks about cryptomarias, brackenbrown magnolias, Nellie Stevens hollies, and possibly planning in a staggered pattern with variation of using different types of plants as well. So I'd like to sort of, A, we're going to have, we're going to have a planted buffer, and that planted buffer will consist of, what I would like to see is a variety of the suggestions that the Town Arbors suggested. As part of that buffer, you had a exhibit last week, I think Thursday or Wednesday, where you had a line, and you had a dotted line which pointed out where plantings and fence and only fence or only fence and plantings were. That would need to be elaborated on for the March 11th. The fence height, I think we dictated, is six feet. You sent an image at 515 or something like that, so we should put the image on there. And I know in talking to Mr. Hood, the whole, one of the bigger discussion points was, and it came out of a letter, an email from Mary Jo, thank you, Mary Jo, for also adding in this, who will be required to maintain the fence? And what's the HOA's involvement? So in reading the email that I got at 6:01 PM tonight, it sounds like, and Mr. Hood, you can either acknowledge or know or yea or me here, that we would plant the shrubbery and the fence on the Rice Road petitioner's property.
Correct, on the development side.
Correct. Okay? And thereby, you're maintaining it, and it's in your court to deal with, Mr. Hood just gets the benefit from the privacy of the screening and the fence.
And then it covers using the same trees that we had, because those would then get the sunlight because they'd be on that side and not covered in these trees.
However that works out, but I, we're still looking for the variation in the plantings we're talking about as well, correct?
So I believe the solution would become, and the changes that happened today, we got those questions earlier this morning, and then made those changes, the suggestions, answered those, and I followed up with Mary Jo and yourself and got that information back up as well as connecting with Mr. Hood. And I believe the solution to that was instead of changing that and intertwining it within his trees, Mr. Hood's preference was to place it on the other side and then keep with the arborvitae, because that provides a better thicker coverage, and that was going to be on the, on the property development side, therefore not affecting his, and therefore not having to change the species to, to come along that fence line.
Okay. That is all well and good, provided the Town Arbors comes back and says, that's a good deal. But I don't think anybody wants to come back a year from now and say that there wasn't enough sunlight. And the other comment that I got from our Arbors was, there was an immense amount of tree root growth from all these different hardwoods and all that they would suffocate out, arborvitae. So he, not only did he, he commended you on the program and the idea, but he also was concerned about the plant species, the roots of other trees, and the sunlight aspect of it.
So, and may I ask, I believe that was in reference to him being intertwined within his current trees, not on the other side? Because on the other side, it truly, when it gets great, it'll be full of sun. So that'll be, and real quick, when we were asked about the fence, we asked for just a picture, it was already described as a six-foot privacy fence. I think they just asked, you know, a dog-eared, and here was the picture.
Well, that's very, I mean, that's very important. I mean, one is that staff needed to be involved in this whole conversation from the get-go, regardless of who you're talking to, because they need to be working with your attorney in getting these items on those documents, because a six-foot tall fence could mean anything three years from now when you get fully developed, and then we're back to what are we talking about? So-
We can provide fence detail.
That's, that's fine. That's fine. So I just, so the bottom line is, we've got a fence, we've got a buffer of shrubbery of some form. I'd like to have Ralph Ramsoor, you know, give his seal approval. Mr. Hood has already given his seal approval via an email I just received not just an hour ago from that aspect of it, but the important thing is it's all in your property, you're responsible for it and maintaining it. And I think there were some guarantee issues in here we talked about and things like that, so hopefully we'll be able to knock this all out by, what did we say, March 11th?
Can I ask that question, though, with the, I guess the three big pending items was the fence, which I believe we've covered, the changing of the trees, which would be approved by the Town Arbors, and then the traffic calming, which would be up to council and the town, would not, would not be our governance. Does it still have to, I guess, as has been recommended for deferral, would we say if those were conditions that we met, that was the fence we're going to work with, we're going to work with the Town Arbors, and that's going to be up to council, who it sounds like makes that decision on the traffic calming?
You talked to that guy right there.
Would it still, would we still have to be deferred if everything else is in motion and everything else has been approved? And fortunately with Mr. Hood saying, you know, he's in approval as long as we're doing what we say we're going to do.
Well, I guess my only fault would be the staff. We've been running around like chickens where our heads cut off trying to organize this. I think it's only fair to them to, do they need the dust to settle and give it the time to give it some breathing room here that we get it right? I think we've done it too many times where we get to the situation, we go, oh, we'll get a note to cover it, and then two years down the road, something runs afoul, and we're all sort of upset at each other because we just could have just taken an extra few days. So I lend that to Mary Jo and Jay, if you want to respond to that?
Yeah, really, if you look at the lots beginning at 4 through 9, really that whole side of the property, we're now talking about locating a six-foot fence and landscaping. There's a 30-foot rear yard. Well, now you've got plants and fence material that's going to reduce, I'm assuming, those rear yards significantly. So we really need a, we don't have a site plan on record today that depicts what's going to be planned, even if it seems relatively minor to you all. We don't have the correct site plan on file, so it can be approved as noted, but that's, there's a lot of noted in there.
I agree.
I understand the lots won't change, but you're giving up a lot of backyard space. It's just, it's pretty much, we're not going to create a separate park, it'll be as part of the first one, as I understand.
Do we have any more questions? Mr. Higdon?
I just had a couple of comments. I noted in documentation, it talked about the, a good and bad side of the fence, and I would prefer that both sides be good, if you know, not have a bad one.
Yeah, I think they refer to as the finished side, you know, just from the curb side versus from that yard side.
And just another comment, I know Nellie Stevens Holly was suggested as a possible planting, and those are very good for screening, but they also are very sound calming. They absorb a lot of sound. They're frequently planted along highways and things, so that might be a consideration.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you. On the, on the topic of traffic calming devices, if the traffic is coming through here and someone suggests a speed table here, I would assume it would also be a crossing, pedestrian crossing with such signage. I don't understand why a three-way stop here wouldn't slow traffic down as effectively as a speed table. The, I mean, if you've ever seen some of the pickup trucks and painting vans that go over our speed table, it's loud and entertaining at Matthews Station Street.
Duke's of Hazzard.
Yeah. I'm kind of flexible on it. I don't understand why we can't make a decision or why we're consulting everybody. I'm fine with a speed table if that's a desire of the board, but I don't understand the argument of why a three-way stop wouldn't work here and maybe a speed bump or a speed bump somewhere else. And they're pretty easy to put in versus a table, which is a little more complicated. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Query?
Kind of like to give you an idea on that, is my feeling is, is the park that's really across from 5, 6, and 7, that I thought, I think the cross path should be right in there, because that's the park in that area. And with the speed table with a crossing place in that would be at that, that 7, 8, and 9 area. Are you looking at the other piece of the park instead of the-
I guess I am. I, I, I think this is where something was suggested for traffic calming because of the curve and the straightaway. Was I wrong? I realize that the open space is here, but if you're going to cross in here, you're only going to one of these houses. I'm not sure where the best location is. I just don't understand the resistance to a three-way stop.
I don't, I don't understand the three-way stop part. I mean, I, we have those in our neighborhood, and I tell you, most people don't stop at it. They're going through it, so that's why I was thinking of a table.
We can take this up with Public Works. We've got the deferral for a month, so we can go back to CJ O'Neil and ask those questions. Any other comments regarding the motion that's on the table? Mr. Urban?
Well, we might as well just keep them up here forever. It surprisingly hasn't come up, but I wanted to bring this out because, Mr. Hood, you had asked this question as well about CMS, and you've been very polite about just sort of accepting the terminology on that and moving forward and talking about the buffer and screening. However, I did follow up with the District 6 Representative Sean Strain and Commissioner Millier, you might have been speaking to him as well. I inquired about this, and I found some interesting things that maybe staff could check with CMS. First thing is that the report is for the 20th day of 2017-18. So CMS is using, according to Sean Strain, a year-old data. He said we should be using the 1819 data stream. So that's item number one, and I thought that'd be important for you to hear. The three schools in question are Crown Point, Min Hill Middle, and Butler High. And as far as Crown Point goes, if you use the old data, you would be under the assumption that Crown Point has 670 students, but just this year they have 579. So according to the District 6 rep, he said that the utilization charts that you all received, Crown Point Elementary is technically underutilized and is safe to absorb the nine folks from the school. Min Hill Middle, he said roughly went up 50 students this year, but coincidentally, the district to the north and district to the south, which- the district to the north and district to the south, which sandwiched Min Hill Middle, are both underutilized. And so a slight rearranging there would allow the four students from Min Hill Middle to be absorbed as well, but he did, he did point out very specifically, he says, it's kind of unusual that to my north and to my south are completely underutilized and we're, we're over-concentrated in the center, didn't make any sense, but that's a CMS issue to, to rectify those problems. And then the, the last one was Butler High, which was looking for an additional six students, and I learned a lot in talking to Sean in a brief few minutes, and those utilization charts were wonderful. He said Butler will be fine and, quote unquote, Butler will be fine absorbing these particular students, but we need to continue to monitor and plan for the future, obviously, but in comparison to Audrey Kell and Providence and all, we're really in really excellent shape compared to the other school districts. I think the mayor could probably attest to that. So I know, Mr. Hood, you had some questions about that, and so I investigated that from the aspect of where the school sat in this particular instance, and based on these numbers, the District Six person feels very, very comfortable about this situation, unlike some other petitions we might be hearing about. So I wanted to, I don't know if you're going to be here back in March 11th, but I wanted to raise that because that was a question raised at that point in time.
And I will add, Mr. Urban, that there is not a definition for utilization in CMS, so when you begin to talk about it and compare schools, there's no way to understand exactly what 100% utilization is.
They throw these numbers around and in comparison, it was quite remarkable.
Yep. Yes, Mr. Carmichael?
If I, if I'm like Mr. Mayor, so I just want to make sure we, we cover the things we need to cover. We're going to have a revised plan that shows the location of the fence and the plantings. We'll have a fence detail, a little, little cross-section that shows the, the plantings, and then we'll get with Sir Ramser on the species and get his recommendation, and then we'll have information on the timing, you know. It's, I'll get with Mary Jo on the timing of the planning of those matters, and then we'll, we'll have a three-year warranty for those matters, and then the HOA will maintain the items. But I think those are what we heard. And then as to, as far as the traffic calming, we'll leave that to your discretion.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Anything else? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion to defer until March 11th, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is 7C2 elevation approval for the Village at Plantation Estates. Ms. DeBent?
Yes, I would like to disclose that I am an employee with ACTS Retirement Like Communities, but I have talked with the attorney and he does not see any conflict.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Golding?
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council members. As you've mentioned, these are elevation request approval for the Village at Plantation Estates along South Trade Street and Fullwood, Fullwood Street. This was part of the rezoning approved in 2012, 589. There was a maximum of 300 independent living units that were approved for this development. With this phase-two development, this would bring the living units to 234 total. This is the second phase that we are discussing. These units are already in the development. The new duplexes, these here, will all have the garages facing inward. You can see the parking areas here. And these apartments, the four apartment buildings, will be same as the existing apartment buildings except for they will be increased by eight feet in width. Again, that's just another plan. This shows what the internal view of the duplexes will be. This is what you will see from Fullwood and South Trade Street. Again, this is internal to the site showing how the side-load garage would, there's the sidewalk, and these are the side-loaded garages. And some additional views of the buildings, the duplexes. These are the views of the apartment buildings, again, very similar, basically the exact same as what is currently out on site. And this shows the expansion. This is what existing and this is how they will expand, the approximate eight feet. They will be brick or, or stone and 50% of the combined total area of the elevations throughout the development. And this final phase will also require the developer to install the 10-foot multi-use path along Fullwood Lane. They will also meet all the landscaping, buffering, setbacks, parking requirements per the rezoning and the Matthews deal. Any questions? And the applicant is here.
Any questions?
No, I got a question.
Mr. Querry?
Go back to the, there. Where's the driveway on there?
So.
Bottom left.
Okay. So this is the sidewalk internal to the site.
Okay.
Okay? So there's the sidewalk again, so the driveway, it's side-loaded. So you see the windows here, those are the garage windows, and that's internal to the site. So along Fullwood and South Trade, this is what, if you see anything after the landscaping is installed, that's what it would be. This is what it'll look like.
Okay, so it's not actually showing the driveways and their side-load driveway?
Yes, right here.
It's a dark gray.
Dark gray right here. This is the driveway.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, but they're all going to be side-loaded?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Miller?
The driveway is internal, so the front of the house will face Fullwood, correct?
Correct. If you look at this area here, so here's internal to the site, here's the driveways.
The color rendering is a little bit better on building 16, 17, 18. I think it's further up.
I'm sorry.
Right there.
Yeah.
The white is the driveway internal to the system, and then Fullwood sees the front of the houses.
Right.
As well as 11 through 15.
As well, right, South Trade. These are all, here's the garages, this way.
Mr. Urban?
Mary Jo, is it, and maybe the petitioner can, is it just a matter that the, the way of phase one is depicted, it seems to me that the phase-one planting along South Trade Street is, is clearly different in this diagram than the phase-two planting along South Trade Street. Is that just a mischaracterization because of graphics? Because my take would be is that there is a really large disconnect between the way phase one with the berms and the plantings transitions to a series of street trees.
I, I would state a little that, yes, there are existing trees here still, and that's part of the reason for the depiction. This is, yes, it is not what you see out there now on phase one. I would, you know, let them answer further, but the, the rezoning does talk about the buffer and what needs to be planted in there along the streets. That is a requirement.
But, okay, it is a requirement, but how do we know that from phase one to phase two, it's going to be a similar kind, or is that what we're going to get?
This, I, I think this is over, I, I think this, this is not exactly what is approved on the rezoning. I think this is just a conceptual picture for you.
Okay, that's.
Would you like to?
I was just pointing out that we're dealing tonight strictly with the elevations. Oh, okay. All right, so when. Get a year down the road, we don't like that, have a fit. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion? What is the arrangement here for the motion? It's at the end of the. Mr. Miller?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Village at Plantation Estates duplex and apartment building elevations based on plans submitted and discussed tonight.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor, all those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mary Jo. Next item, 7C3, is consider request for waiver for moratorium to submit rezoning application for 1625 Windsor Square Drive. If you remember, this was the property that the ABC Commission came in and, and the petition Jay, are you going to speak to this, or?
It's, it's pretty self-explanatory. I think what we have in the, the memo, but if your board does vote to grant the waiver, then this item's already, within your consent agenda to accept the rezoning request.
Mr. Urban?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to go ahead and make that motion because considering the fact that the building is just sitting there vacant doesn't do us any good, so we'll let the Discount Tire Auto take a shot at it, I don't mind. So I'd like to go ahead, that we allow the rezoning reapplication at 1625 Windsor Square Drive, based on the memo dated February 6, 2019 from Mr. Jay Camp.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, all those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jay. Next item on the agenda is reports from advisory boards and committees. First, we have an update on Historic Preservation Advisory Committee. Was Paula going to be here to discuss that?
We must have breakdown of communication.
Okay. All right. So we do have the minutes from that. The update Appearance and Tree Committee, Debbie? Debbie Foster's here, chair of that committee.
The Appearance and Tree Committee pretty much was resurrected about a year ago, and so I thought I'd give you a brief update of what we accomplished last year and what are some things that are on our radar, radar this year. We had our first meeting in April last year where we were fully approved by the commissioners. We currently have two openings and we have two applications as well, and we will be continuing to look for other applicants so that we can fill our quota there. Last year, one of our biggest accomplishments was the invasive plant removal at Squirrel Lake Park, and if any of you saw pictures of that, there were literally mountains of invasive plants pulled up. We put a lot of cudzu and iliyagnus and privet and all kinds of things, English ivy, pulled it out of the area and made a huge mess for Ralph to clean up. He appreciated that. One of the other things that's been on our radar for quite a while now, in fact, since August of 2017, is, was what we call the invasive plant ordinance and the native plant ordinance at that time. We have now gone a different route and, and looked at text amendment changes, so you're going to be getting a lot of information about that within the next couple of months, where we have recommended that things that are problematic in Matthews be removed from our list for developers, and other things that are wonderful from a habitat perspective be put on that list. So the net result is that we've actually increased the number of plants on the list, and Mary Jo will be talking to you a lot about that. Things that are coming up this year, we hope to have additional invasive plant removals. Rice Road is definitely one of those things that we, we've got on the radar. There is a lot of wisteria over there, and unfortunately, the way that wisteria is removed is to cut it and then immediately spray it with Roundup. And because of that, we will not be asking for kids, anybody under 18, to participate. We simply don't feel that the safety can be guaranteed. We would also go back to Squirrel Lake Park again and continue the invasive plant removal over there and perhaps look at the Greenway in Matthews as well. We are still quite interested in experimenting with the use of goats for native flower invasive plant removal, so we are going to continue to, to investigate and look at the data on that. They are being used, and there is data being kept on that, by the way. It's not, everybody always laughs when I say that, it's not a joke, they're really using goats to kill invasive plants. We are also interested in having a tree sale for the town of Matthews featuring native trees, and we may try to do something in the fall with that. There's some possibility that Trees Charlotte might be interested in partnering with us in Matthews, so we're continuing to investigate. We are very interested in the property at McKee and Pleasant Plains, where the town is being given, what is it, 20 acres there? We have some ideas for consideration there and some of the things, an arboretum, that was Ralph's idea, which I think is absolutely a stunning idea. We could have a plant nursery over there as well. Under the power lines, which generally speaking aren't used for much, that would make a wonderful butterfly highway site, which is a North Carolina Wildlife Federation project. We are very interested in a tree library, that came from you today. So if you haven't seen it on Facebook, a tree library, it uses a large bore tree that died, and they cut it down and keep it about six feet, and they hollow out the inside of it and they actually use it for one of these little library sites that you see popping up in neighborhoods around. So it's a way to take a tree that was past its prime and had to come down and use it for something beneficial and that's attractive. One of our members suggested actually putting information in there on trees and tree care, so that would be another way it could be used. We also had a meeting with Ryan, talking about how we can preserve our trees in the town of Matthews and increase or preserve our tree canopy, so that is very high on our radar. Finally, I just wanted to say the Appearance and Tree Committee greatly appreciates Ralph. He is such a treasure, it doesn't matter what cock-eyed idea we throw at him, he's willing to help us figure out how to bring it to fruition, so we really appreciate that town employee.
Any questions? Mr. Higgins?
I just have a comment. I was served on the Appearance and Tree Board for many years, as did Commissioner Urban, and wow, you're putting us to shame with the amount of stuff you're doing. It's really fantastic, so.
Thank you.
Really appreciate all the stuff you're getting involved in. You're, you're probably the most activity we've seen at the committee since it's been around, I believe, so.
We didn't know what we were supposed to do, so we just did what we wanted to do.
Fantastic. Great work. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Urban?
I'll take that back. That tree ordinance is very daunting, especially when you've got to work with bureaucrats and all, it takes years. I want to make sure that between staff and the Appearance and Tree Board, I know we've talked about on the streetscape design aspects of downtown and all, that the A&amp;T Board is engaged because obviously it's Appearance and Tree, and we've been talking about the extension of the planters at the 100 North Block, trees that are better for street trees and things like that. So I, I know we're going to be talking later tonight about some funding for streetscape design, but I want to make sure that somehow we, make sure they're, they're queued into the process to help us along with Ralph as we get further down the pike.
We'll be happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. The next report is update on the Mecklenburg Education Advisory Committee. Mr. Miller?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick summary on what's been going on. There was a, you know, since the Municipal Concerns Act came out in November, we have met three times, once in December, once in January, and once in this room on February Thus far, it's mostly been presentations, PowerPoint presentations, and sort of a fact-finding mission where they want us to all be on the same playing field with where they get their historical data, where they figure the population is going to be from year to year, how the property taxes are spent, where they get their money from and how it's spent, and it goes on and on to the School Boards Association, how they've divided up Charlotte in terms of busing zones. And when they, when they divided it up into three zones, they realized they didn't have magnet schools in each zone, and they were faulting one, so they reassigned some things And they, they use a metric called a rubric, which I'm not too familiar with, but I guess the best way I can explain it is sort of like Facebook's version of an algorithm. And these rubrics are their metric for every decision that they make. Thus far, we haven't really had too much input. When I say we, I mean the municipalities, whether it's Huntersville or Cornelius, Mintil, Pineville. We haven't had the opportunity for too much input, but the last item, the last item on, on the agenda in this room, February 5th, was next steps, next steps for the Municipal Education Advisory Committee. And here's a few of the items I've listed in, for my opinion, and I would welcome here's a few of the items I've listed, and for my opinion, and I would welcome any suggestions this board has, as well as what the new Mecklenburg Committee on Education may come up with. I think, I think we feel that we would prefer localized representation, we've talked about an area superintendent office, either in Matthews or nearby. We've talked about adding public input to the agenda, in other words, if you have a meeting in Matthews or Cornelius or Uptown, or perhaps Mint Hill or Pineville in the future, if there's an audience member, a public comments section would open up more dialogue. Of course, security is at peak interest, you have wand versus walk-through detectors, you have the discussion of police suggesting single point of entry, which might not be possible right away, but it's something to talk about. And then a question we all have is trailers versus brick and mortar. They have a metric where you need twelve square feet per student in the cafeteria if you have brick and mortar, and our argument is, well, if you already have them in the trailers and they're going to the same cafeteria, where is that argument coming from? So we're debating those types of topics. You know, they're saying that they wouldn't build new facilities in Matthews as a bargaining tool or a threat, and we find that unacceptable. Of course, there's the typical traffic patterns on municipal streets, which needs to be dealt with, whether it's Elizabeth Lane or Trade Street, or perhaps Crown Point on Sam Newell. And then last, there's a topic of career and technical education, which is another way of saying trade school. If everyone's not made for college, is there an opportunity after high school to study plumbing or electrical or masonry, and could there be apprenticeships or internships? I think that's something worth promoting. So those are some of the current topics we're working on.
Mr. Higgin.
Jeff, do you see any softening on the Municipal Concerns Act, like they would consider building a school here, or is that just hard and fast, they still sticking to their guns as far as what the requirements to remove that?
I feel that there's a softening of personalities and a warmer dialogue going on between us, but I'm not certain how to answer that question just yet, I think it may be a year down the road before we broach that subject.
I think everyone that's DIES knows that we need a new school or schools in Matthews, and we can't wait fifteen years to have another school built, so.
Agreed. Mr. Melton.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff, is the data that they're giving you, in explaining their rationale behind decisions they're making, et cetera, is it promoting an agenda or educating you as to how they got to where they are?
A little bit of both, perhaps, it's certainly giving me and all of the municipalities how they measure things, given their rubrics. It's, you know, it's mega data, it's big data, you know, and we're asked to hold all questions until the presenter has finished, and sometimes an hour and a half later, it's difficult to, they just want to make sure we're all on the same field of metrics, so we understand what tax value we're getting back, how many are in a classroom, you know, children don't all come in packages of sixteen, and you have to balance them out into the various schools, et cetera. I think they're getting warmer and softer as time goes on.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Miller. Next item is the Consent Agenda, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve Consent Agenda, items nine A through nine H, no, nine H three.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, all those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item ten is unfinished business, consider cost estimates and contract for conceptual downtown streetscape. Mr. Camp.
All right, well, think back to December, we had a very spirited discussion about streetscape, I think everybody left our, at least that session of many planning conference kind of energized, looking at some imagery of other small towns and what they'd done to improve their streetscapes. Still can't hear me? Okay. Our directive was to go out and get some cost estimates, just to have some idea of what this is going to cost, just to get us off of, just to get us started, so we have received a proposal from Block Design, they're a local firm, in fact, I believe the head of the company lives in Matthews, but they're very local. They've given us a two-part proposal, if you've read through the memo, you'll see that it's broken into two distinct areas, there is a core area with a cost of fourteen thousand five hundred dollars, and additional areas, twenty-three thousand dollars, and let me fast forward to a map here. And we asked the firm to develop two separate proposals, just to give us an idea of what would be our cost, just to look at the main core of downtown, this includes the one hundred and two hundred blocks of Trade Street, then off to the side here, Matthew Station, and as well Charles Street. And a couple of reasons we added Charles Street, to be the heart of downtown, there's almost no sidewalk, once you get to the New Portrait Gallery Restaurant, it's really a sad state of affairs. We're also, we've had some discussions about a public parking lot next to the post office, we really feel like if you're going to have people parking down there, you really need to improve the streetscape. So you see the core area there in the middle, the sort of magenta line from Matthew Street to fifty-one, and then down to the Greenway represents the balance of the study that would get it up to the thirty-seven thousand five hundred. I think you, conceptually, adding this to the comprehensive CIP, you might even break this project into two phases. Phase one may just be the heart or the core of downtown, and these ancillary areas may be a second phase of a streetscape in the future. As I said in the memo, this is, this would be a very first step. We're currently putting together some very, very rough cost estimates for the comprehensive CIP, Public Works is working on that now to give us an idea of what construction would cost. But my argument for you this evening would be that if it's our intent to develop this project to really improve our streetscape in downtown within, say, the next five years, this is a critical first step. If this is a project that's going to be bounced five to ten years out, it's probably not good money to spend right now. So that's a discussion that we need to first have, is, you know, are we willing, and I know you don't have any numbers for you today to talk about the streetscape improvements, but this is the first step. The last bullet point there, you have a little bit on deliverables, I know sometimes when we bring proposals to you, we don't give you your deliverables. You would have what we'd call two-dimensional plans, which if you scroll to the end here, this is just a generic, sort of look-down, two-dimensional, full color, giving you an idea of what a, the streetscape would look like, it's going to give you hardscape materials, landscape elements, plazas, seating areas, really gives you exact details, and something for an engineering firm to work from, to actually build it out. There would also be what we call a bird's eye or three-dimensional rendering developed just for the core area, this really will help better illustrate what the project will look at, kind of giving that three D aspect, that's for the general, again, for the core area of downtown, so that's a little bit on the deliverables of this project.
Mr. Melton.
Thank you, Mayor. Jay, if this is approved and adopted and we receive the deliverables, what will be the necessary documents or materials needed to implement? What comes between this and construction, or this and the implementation? Or can we take this and implement it? Is there going to be engineered drawings needed during?
Yeah, this would not include any engineered drawings, this is just creating a conceptual design for the streetscape, there would be a cross, a street cross-section, it's going to state, for instance, you know, if we've got ten-foot sidewalks, is there going to be a brick accent to that? How wide is that accent going to be? Where's the brick accent going to be? What are the lighting elements? We spend a lot of time talking about lighting, so this is just something to hand over to the engineering firm and say, we need to figure out how to build this.
Thank you.
Mr. Higgin.
Jay, is Block Design an engineering firm? Can they do the drawings?
They're multidisciplinary, they do everything.
Could they do the next step of this?
So the next step, the, and the manager may need to help me with this, I think the cost could exceed, they would probably have to go out to bid, the engineering, I'm trying to think the, I don't know if it's half a million dollars or more, but you would get to a point in the cost of this that would probably be a...
We think the engineering drawings are going to be a half a million dollars?
I guess if that's still classified as design work.
It's either, I think it's fifty.
Fifty.
Fifty is design, so this doesn't have to go to bid.
So in theory, we could stay with the firm and have them go detail design, but we would rate it out RFP, lowest responsible, well, that's, it's most qualified bidder, it's not lowest responsible.
Correct.
Right.
So, but that may help them in a leg up of like, they know the project better than anybody.
I think there's a lot of synergies by having the engineering company be the same firm that does this, it just seems kind of redundant, and then go pay an engineering firm to figure out what all these design drawings are, and then create construction documents.
We didn't go out, we didn't put this out for multiple bids, we were just testing the water, we weren't really sure if this was going to have legs and move forward, so we were just giving you an idea of cost. If you did pull engineering into this now, it would bump us over that fifty thousand threshold.
I will say, Mr. Mayor, put it down, that we have a history doing this very same thing in Matthews with the community center, back when it was first being upbuilt, you know, built up, we had an architect who was experienced in historic properties, and we wanted to go to the next phase, and so the board was able to skirt around, legally skirt around that requirement of an RFQ, based on the fact that this person, this particular architect, had the knowledge of the building and had historic properties knowledge, and was familiar, so we were able to go with him directly, so that is a possibility.
Okay, Mr. Miller.
Thank you. Jay, is this the same firm that's doing the Matthew Station intersection for bumpouts lighting and perhaps median?
I believe Alta was one of the firms, Becky's nodding yes on that, so it is a different firm.
Should they be, are we double paying for the same intersection? I'm wondering, I'm wondering, the one intersection was, I'm concerned about our money. We got a lot of money going into that intersection, then we have more money going up and down the same area. They should be hand in hand, or, I don't know, it seems frustrating to have so many designers come in and say, this is how you should do it. I mean, I'm not the guy to go to Waukamae Pottery and buy more planters and plant some plants, but still, it seems like we're spending a lot of money on studies to say, in Higgin's words. And if it would be forty-one thousand for north and south combined, why is the intersection eighty-eight thousand? Is it because of the electrical lighting and things like that?
The eighty-eight was the construction.
Yeah, I think the eighty-eight is for construction and design drawings.
For the drawings, not for construction.
For engineered, this is conceptual design, what we're getting now is, from what I understand, pardon me, Mayor, it's engineered drawings. So we got this bid Friday, we got this bid late, we got this bid very recently, didn't we? Well, you and I talked about it late, or Thursday, whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's not even a, normally what we'd like to do, or what we said the other last time, is we do a budget amendment with this, and we didn't, because in my mind, we have a planning conference coming up.
Okay.
I think what I would say is, here's the numbers we're talking about, think about how big of an area you want, but I do think we should not adopt this tonight, and let's circle back up with Alta, because it could be, we could be stepping on each other's toes, and I did push Jay to get this on the agenda, because I thought, oh, let's get this done before the planning conference, but in hindsight, I think the point's very well-made, and I think we've got to make sure there's, it's not redundant.
Yeah, they should either talk to each other, or if they, if we're not going to do it that way, that intersection could be subtracted from this project, and just, we decide the better of the two plans, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. Urban?
Jeff is correct, I mean, well, from the standpoint that Alta is dealing, Alta's strict engineering, it's, the whole proposal is multimodal infrastructure and parking study, it is a different dive into design than Block. Block's expertise, because I know them very, very well, there's only a handful of really good, exceptional civil landscape engineers in town, they bring to it the aesthetic side, because they are landscape architects, where I formally think that Alta probably doesn't really emphasize that, but I think it would be good to figure out a package of deliverables that gives a demarcation between where one person stops and one person starts, so that's clear, and I guess to ask Charlie, is it possible that you could, from doing design development or construction drawings, to compartmentalize the design project, meaning, could you look at the inner core as a design development, construction drawing package, and as long as it was under fifty thousand dollars, the manager could let that contract? Can you break it into phases?
You can, and I think also, though, as I had mentioned a moment ago, I don't have a problem with phasing it, but at the same time, if you have a comfort level with an existing landscape architect, then you can still do the waiver.
Okay.
Of RFQ.
And I think part of the legislative agenda was to talk to Riley about the whole issue of RFP versus RFQ, was that not?
Very heavy lift.
Very heavy lift?
Yeah.
Okay. But, I mean, because the bottom line is, is that, whether they study the core, or they study outside the core, my thought process would be, the design attributes of the core are going to be the design attributes of the extension. It may change based on the scale and nature of the buildings adjacent to it, but if you were to, if you were to say, hey, we didn't have the money, if you at least started with the core, you would have the basis for the design moving forward. But, yeah, I think Hazen's point is, let's chat about this at the planning conference, these numbers aren't, to provide three-dimensional deliverables, three D views, for the price tag they're talking about is pretty good, because that's usually a hundred and a quarter, a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, just for rendering services alone.
Just to clarify, Mayor, members of the board, I was talking about doing it at the next board meeting, I'm happy, we're happy to talk about it at the planning conference, whatever the pleasure of the board is, but right now, it's not an agenda item for the planning conference.
No.
I don't think it is.
Streetscape is not, and just to be clear, Alta is working, they're working on the speed table, the intersection improvement there, but they're also doing the downtown multimodal study, which is looking at parking and connectivity, but it's not, it's not a design document, it's not going to tell you what bricks and what trees to put in, so they are, it's data-driven, thank you.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you. One final thought, Jay, you talked about, I heard you mention the sidewalk challenge along Weaver Bennett and Bland Building.
Yes.
Remember, if we do develop that lot for parking, to bring them back to Trade Street, we've also identified a center, center block sidewalk or path that would come up, so you could have one on John, one on Charles, and one center block coming up through the farmer's market as a potential walkway, so maybe that would solve that problem.
That's correct.
Jay, I had two additional items, and Mr. Miller brought up the work that's going on at the end of the street, out front of Town Hall. We also need to make sure that we get the latest plans from DOT for the fifty-one Sam Newell intersection, so that that's incorporated into the study. And then I also wanted to ask Assistant Town Manager, if we've got this in the CIP that we're going to discuss at the planning conference, is that part of that?
We don't have the design costs in there, we have a placeholder right now for the ultimate construction, but we don't have those costs yet, so that's probably one of the projects that we won't necessarily be able to prioritize at this point, because it can be hard to do without the costs, but we can bring it back to the board once we have that information. But we can bring it back to the board, once we have that information and everything's been prioritized, to say, in light of all this information, how does this now fit in with the other work that we've already done?
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anything else? All right, so we will talk about this on the 11th. Is that what you had planned?
25th.
25th.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is new business, 11A. Consider request for temporary street closures from the Matthews Chamber. And, there's Kelly.
Hello, how are you? Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you for being here tonight with me, and me with you. Yeah, this is, I think, pretty deja vu. We didn't change anything, so the same three events and the same streets were asking to be closed, the Healthy Living Expo, and then the Auto Reunion and the Art Walk Music Fest, both held in September. Like I said, I'm happy to be bringing these three events back and working with you all. We met with Captain Terrell last month, and some of your staff, and I believe we're all on the same page, and he sent you a letter of recommendation.
Mr. Melton.
Motion to approve the street closure request for 2019 calendar year. Memo from Kelly, as indicated in our agenda packet.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments or questions for Kelly?
Got a question.
Mr. Higgin.
I support these events, but I always have to ask, have we received any negative comments from business owners or citizens regarding closing the streets? Is anyone's aware of?
We, we had, I'll be honest, we had a little snafu last year with the property manager for the town center. I think she went on vacation and didn't relay our email to the business owners, but we smoothed everything out, and we're, we're all good now, so. But that was, that was only one glitch.
And Hazen, you haven't heard anything?
No, sir, I have not. Social media, Maureen, have you heard, have you heard anything on social media?
I think these are generally viewed very positively. I just always have to ask the question, in case there is somebody that's very concerned about it.
Yeah, the two especially are longstanding events, so I think everyone's prepared.
Okay.
Thank you all.
All right. We have the motion. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item, 12, is a mayor's report. Just wanted to remind you that we did discuss at 6:30, the Matthews Committee on Education. Please review those applications, and we will meet on the 25th at 5:30 to discuss that. Also, just to update you, that staff and myself had a good meeting with DOT today, and they have some actions that they're taking back to return to us. But the, the general discussion was very congenial and very positive, and I think we're, we're moving forward in the right direction. Attorney's, Mr. Higgin.
Mayor, can I ask who you met with from DOT? Who was there?
It was Scott Cole. I don't know everybody's name.
Sean.
Sean was there.
Stuart Basham.
Okay, and then I didn't ever get the last fellow's name.
Travis, I don't know Travis's last name.
Yeah, okay, so, all the, all the main players were there.
Well, and to have Susan and Dana there from our staff, we have people that can really go toe-to-toe on a technical level with DOT, and CJ was there, so we are, our voice is getting heard. They are listening to us.
Great.
Yes.
Good news.
And in addition, we're working to have the, our two representatives on the Transportation Board come to Matthews in the next couple of weeks, and we're going to take some time to look at John Street and just talk about transportation issues in general, so.
Good.
Attorney's report.
No report, Mayor.
Town manager's report.
Quick report. We are working on the planning conference, which will be Friday, the, I don't want to say, is it 19?
22nd.
22nd, and Saturday to 23rd. Everybody's working very hard. Assistant Manager Hawk is working on this comprehensive CIP, big deal. We are going to send out to you guys the list that we've come up with, and the ask is for the board to rank those, force rank them, what's priority type, priority to you, so we can come back and compile that. We want to get this back by next week, right, today, tomorrow, today, a week from today.
Week from today at the latest.
And we're going to send it to you guys tomorrow. I would say, Becky, you and I haven't talked about it, if we haven't thought of something that, you know, the other is okay to answer to, so the intention is see if we can get consensus on where you guys want to go as, as a group. Becky, do you want to add anything?
Sure, and just to clarify, it's going to be 31 projects on this list, and that is a small portion of what is actually included in the entire comprehensive CIP. But these are projects that wouldn't be deemed to be requirements for operations. So for example, a fire truck will not be listed, because that's something that we're going to have to fund and find a way to fund regardless. We're talking more multi-use paths, sidewalk gaps, park development, betterments for some of the roadway projects, things of that nature, to really help the board try to drive the conversation of where are, where are our priorities, and how do we want to fund appropriately.
Mr. Queer.
I can ask the manager, have we got any plans to name the park on Rice Road? I've had some people contact me with wanting to give names and all, and I told them I didn't, I didn't, where we stacked up on that.
We have not. Cory and I were talking about that, just kind of lightly. It's really the, kind of the will of the board. We could, what's the feeling of the board?
We got an email from someone about the original spelling of the Rice name.
Yeah, yeah. To name Rice Road Park, but have it spelled Rice, like, as the original Rice.
Mr. Higgin.
I grew up in South Charlotte, home right near Park Road Park, which is probably the most poorly named park ever. Maybe we can get a little more adventurous with naming.
Park Road Park on Park Road?
Yeah, Park Road Park, yeah, that's great, really. A lot of thought went into that.
So would you all like to have us explore that, the new spelling of Rice, get it to Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, let them vet it, and bring it back to the board?
Yeah, because there's historical significance in Matthews for that.
And/or, and/or, you know, come up with three clever names, and we can vote. They came up with Fountain Rock Park.
Have the fellow in contact, he lives right there at the park, and he is kin to the old Rice's, and part of it was the Rice Road name, but it was something else attached to it, and I don't remember that exactly, so.
Yeah.
Have him give you a contact, just lets you know what the thought is.
Cannonball way.
Okay. You'll have him contact me? Okay. Or if you want to give me the name, I'll, I'll reach out to him. I don't, I don't mind doing that either.
Okay. Mr. Melton.
Don't we have a historical advisory board that could maybe take that and look into?
We could, we could run it by both of them.
Okay. Anything else? We have a motion to adjourn?
No, let's stay.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? Were adjourned.
Hazen.